The session is now called to order. Everybody is requested to rise for the singing of the Philippine national anthem. Please remain standing for a minute of silent prayer or meditation. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we defer the calling of the roll.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the deferment of the approval of the previous session.
Any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move proceed with the reference of-
Disagreeing provisions of House Bill number 3222.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communications letter dated 7 and 14 May 2019 of Janice G. Isonesales, Deputy Director, Office of General Counsel, BSP.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Supina ducis tecum pursuant to Section 152, Rule 23 of the Rules of the House, transmitting the subpoena ducis tecum dated February 13, 2019, issued by BDA A. Epress, Director, General Investigation Bureau. Pursuant to Section 152, Rule 23 of the Rules of the House, transmitting the subpoena ducis tecum dated February 13, issued by BDA A. Epress, Director, General Investigation Bureau A. Pursuant to Section 150 of Section 151, Rule 23 of the Rules of the House, transmitting the subpoena ducis tecum dated February 13, issued by BDA A. Epress, Director, General Investigation Bureau A. Pursuant to Section 151, Rule 23 of the Rules of the House, transmitting the subpoena ducis tecum dated February 14, issued by MIB Suarez, Director, Prosecution and Monitoring Bureau. Pursuant to Section 151, Rule 23 of the Rules of the House, transmitting the subpoena ducis tecum dated July 9, issued by Nelly P. Boguend Góles, Director, PIABD. Pursuant to Section 150, Rule 23 of the Rules of the House, transmitting the subpoena ducis tecum dated February 28, issued by Maria Oliva Helena A. Rojas, Director, General Investigation Bureau B. Committee reports, report number 1322 on House Bill number 9198.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report number 1323 on House Bill number 19199.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend session.
Session is suspended. Session is assumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill number 9199 as contained in Committee Report number 1323, submitted by the Committee on Human Rights. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of said bill.
House Bill 9199, An Act Defining the Rights and Fundamental Freedom of Human Rights Defenders Declaring State Responsibilities and Instituting Effective Mechanisms for the Protection and Promotion of These Rights and Freedoms.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the honorable gentleman from Albay, the honorable Edselagman, for his sponsorships. So move, Madam Speaker.
Although against, please say nay. The eyes have it. House Bill number 9199 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, motion to suspend.
Session is suspended.
Ossenyo-senyo lang ako, oosko na-holko. Okay na, ready.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, the roll call shows that 167 members responded to the call.
With 167 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a coram. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the approval of Journal Number 52 dated May 20 and 21, 2019. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Session is resumed. Majority Leader. Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9024. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members. So move.
Session is resumed. Majority Leader. Session is resumed. Majority Leader. Session is resumed. Majority Leader. The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members. Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members. So move. Madam Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members. So move. Madam Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members. So move.
The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members. The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members. The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9024, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members. So move.
The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members. Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9024. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, the roll call shows that 167 members responded to the call.
With 167 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a coram. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the approval of Journal Number 52 dated May 20 and 21, 2019. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9197. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Secretary General is requested to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Nine One Nine Seven, an act establishing the Coconut Farmers and Industry Development Trust Fund and providing for its management and utilization. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Nine One Nine Seven. Honorable representatives, Abaya, Abayon, Abellianosa, Abu, Abueg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Djong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alcala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragones Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Amentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bersaga, Batawit, Bautista Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Bilyones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Mariavida, Brosas, Bulut Begtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixtrobiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamko, Kayatanos, Celeste, Serafika, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeko, Ko, Kuwanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Kuak, Kuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa de Jesús de Venecia, Defensor, Delmar Del Rosario, Delosomontalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermitabuhay, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Vardone, Farías Fernando, Ferrajuliet, Ferr Luis, Feriol Florendo, Flores Fortun, Fortuna, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcia, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Charon, Gassetaya, Gatchalian, Heron, Goana Ana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Fernando, Gruseta, Gulyas, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Alusos, Javier, Ko, Kunhon, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liatyon, Li, Lemkaychong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Rekto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Saviano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tehada, Tevez, Tianco, Ting, Tinio, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umalie, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Breta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred fifty-nine voting in the affirmative, five negative, and zero abstention, House Bill Nine One Nine Seven, an act establishing the Coconut Farmers and Industry Development Trust Fund and providing for its management and utilization, is hereby approved in third and final reading. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number Nine Zero Two Four. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Secretary General, please proceed.
House Bill Number Nine Zero Two Four, an act imposing stiffer penalties for child abuse, exploitation, and discrimination, amending for the purposes of Republic Act Number Seven Six One Zero as amended. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Nine Zero Two Four. Abaya, Abayon, Abellianosa, Abu, Abueg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alcala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragones Arbison, Arcillas Arenas, Atsensa, Amentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bersaga, Batawit, Bautista Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Bilyones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Mariavida, Brosas, Bulut Begtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixtrobiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamko, Kayatanos, Celeste, Serafika, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeko, Ko, Kuwanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Kuak, Kuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa de Jesús de Venecia, Defensor, Delmar Del Rosario, Delosomontalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermitabuhay, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Vardone, Farías Fernando, Ferrajuliet, Ferr Luis, Feriol Florendo, Flores Fortun, Fortuna, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Charon, Gassetaya, Gatchalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Fernando, Gruseta, Gulyas, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera Dieta, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tehada, Tevez, Tianco, Ting, Tinio, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umalie, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Breta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred sixty-four voting in the affirmative, zero negative, and zero abstention, House Bill Number Nine Zero Two Four is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Floor Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number Nine Zero Five Four. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to call the roll, thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move Madam Speaker.
Secretary General, please proceed.
House Bill Number Nine Zero Five Four, an act providing for the protection of financial consumers, repealing for the purpose Articles One Three One, Two One Four Seven of Republic Act Number Seven Three Nine Four, known as the Consumer Act of the Philippines. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Nine Zero Five Four. Abaya, Abayon, Abellianosa, Abu, Abueg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Djong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alcala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragones Arbison, Arcillas Arenas, Atsensa, Amentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bersaga, Batawit, Bautista, Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Bilyones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Mariavida, Brosas, Bulut Begtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixtrobiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamko, Kayatanos, Celeste, Serafika, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeko, Ko, Kuwanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Kuak, Kuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa de Jesús de Venecia, Defensor, Delmar Del Rosario, Delosomontalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermitabuhay, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Vardone, Farías Fernando, Ferrajuliet, Ferr Luis, Feriol Florendo, Flores Fortun, Fortuna, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Charon, Gassetaya, Gatchalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Fernando, Gruseta, Gulyas, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Alusos, Javier, Ko, Kunhon, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liatyon, Li, Lemkaychong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda Madrona, Malapita Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadato Suarto, Magudadato Sajid, Marco Leta, Marcos Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navanieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyao, No Minalo Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Bininola, Pakia Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisia Sagabas, Kimborodasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Rolampagos, Rivilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Rekto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Saviano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelitas, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tehada, Tevez, Tianco, Ting, Tinio, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umalie, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Breta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred sixty-four voting in the affirmative, zero negative, and zero abstention, House Bill Nine Zero Five Four entitled "An Act Providing for the Protection of Financial Consumers," repealing for the purposes Articles One Three One to One Four Seven of R.A. Number Seven Three Nine Four, known as the Consumer Act of the Philippines, is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Floor Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number Nine Zero Nine Nine. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Secretary General, please proceed.
House Bill Number Nine Zero Nine Nine, an act strengthening the Philippine Sports Commission, amending for the purposes of Republic Act Number Six Eight Four Seven, otherwise known as the Philippine Sports Commission Act. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Nine Zero Nine Nine. Abaya, Abayon, Abellianosa, Abu, Abueg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Djong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alcala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragones Arbison, Arcillas Arenas, Atsensa, Amentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bersaga, Batawit, Bautista Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Bilyones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Mariavida, Brosas, Bulut Begtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixtrobiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castro, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Fernando, Gruseta, Gulyas, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Alusos, Javier, Ko, Kunhon, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liatyon, Li, Lemkaychong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda Madrona, Malapita Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadato Suarto, Magudadato Sajid, Marco Leta, Marcos Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navanieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyao, No Minalo Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Bininola, Pakia Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisia Sagabas, Kimborodasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Rolampagos, Rivilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Rekto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Saviano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tehada, Tevez, Tianco, Ting, Tinio, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umalie, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Breta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velardo, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate
With one hundred sixty-four voting in the affirmative, zero negative, and zero abstention, House Bill Nine Zero Nine Nine is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Floor Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of bills on third reading.
Any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Floor Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend session for two minutes.
Session suspended.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number Nine Zero Six Five as contained in Committee Report Number One Two Two Three submitted by the Committee on Basic Education and Culture. So move Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
Second reading.
Majority Leader? Clarification, is this for second or third?
For second reading, Madam Speaker.
Oh, sorry. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Bill Number Nine Zero Six Five, an act institutionalizing support mechanisms and protection for public school teachers and personnel in matters of student discipline for classroom management.
Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move that the Honorable Antonio Tinio of Act Teachers' Partilis be recognized to begin sponsorship of the measure.
The Honorable Tinio is now recognized for his sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note be taken as the sponsorship speech for this bill.
Noted. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation. So move Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we close the period of interpolation.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of committee amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no member who wishes to make any committee amendments, I move that we close the period of committee amendments. So move Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of committee amendments is hereby terminated. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of individual amendments. So move Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to make any committee amendments, I move that we close the period of committee amendments. So move Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of committee amendments is hereby terminated. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of individual amendments. So move Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to introduce any individual amendments on the said bill, I move that we close the period of amendments. So move Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments is hereby terminated. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number Nine Zero Six Five. So move Madam Speaker.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number Nine Zero Six Five on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number Nine Zero Six Five is approved on second reading. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move that we resume consideration of bills on third reading. So move Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number Nine One Zero Three, and for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of said measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number Nine One Zero Three, an act providing for the magna carta of the out-of-school youth. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Nine One Zero Three. Abaya, Abayon, Abellianosa, Abu, Abueg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Djong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alcala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragones Arbison, Arcillas Arenas, Atsensa, Amentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bersaga, Batawit, Bautista Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Bilyones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Mariavida, Brosas, Bulut Begtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixtrobiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamko, Kayatanos, Celeste, Serafika, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeko, Ko, Kuwanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Kuak, Kuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa de Jesús de Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, Delosomontalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermitabuhay, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Vardone, Farías Fernando, Ferrajuliet, Ferr Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuna, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Charon, Gassetaya, Gatchalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Fernando, Gruseta, Gulyas, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Alusos, Javier, Ko, Kunhon, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liatyon, Li, Lemkaychong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda Madrona, Malapita Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadato Suarto, Magudadato Sajid, Marco Leta, Marcos Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navanieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyao, No Minalo Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Bininola, Pakia Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisia Sagabas, Kimborodasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Rolampagos, Rivilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Rekto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Saviano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelitas, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tehada, Tevez, Tianco, Ting, Tinio, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umalie, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Breta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against, and zero abstaining, House Bill Number Nine One Zero Three is approved on third reading. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number Nine One Zero Four. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number Nine One Zero Four, an act instituting inclusive education, establishing inclusive education learning resource centers for children and youth with special needs in all public schools divisions, providing for standards and guidelines, and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Nine One Zero Four. Abaya, Abayon, Abellianosa, Abu, Abueg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Djong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alcala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragones Arbison, Arcillas Arenas, Atsensa, Amentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bersaga, Batawit, Bautista Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Bilyones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Mariavida, Brosas, Bulut Begtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixtrobiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamko, Kayatanos, Celeste, Serafika, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeko, Ko, Kuwanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Kuak, Kuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa de Jesús de Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, Delosomontalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermitabuhay, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Vardone, Farías Fernando, Ferrajuliet, Ferr Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuna, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Charon, Gassetaya, Gatchalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Fernando, Gruseta, Gulyas, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Alusos, Javier, Ko, Kunhon, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liatyon, Li, Lemkaychong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda Madrona, Malapita Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadato Suarto, Magudadato Sajid, Marco Leta, Marcos Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navanieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyao, No Minalo Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Bininola, Pakia Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisia Sagabas, Kimborodasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Rolampagos, Rivilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Rekto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Saviano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tehada, Tevez, Tianco, Ting, Tinio, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umalie, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Breta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against, and zero abstaining, House Bill Number Nine Zero Four is approved on third reading. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number Nine One Zero Five. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the measure and call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number Nine One Zero Five, an act promoting graded urban agricultural development in all metropolitan areas nationwide to address food security concerns and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Nine One Zero Five. Abaya, Abayon, Abellianosa, Abu, Abueg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Djong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alcala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragones Arbison, Arcillas Arenas, Atsensa, Amentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bersaga, Batawit, Bautista Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Bilyones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Mariavida, Brosas, Bulut Begtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixtrobiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamko, Kayatanos, Celeste, Serafika, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeko, Ko, Kuwanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Kuak, Kuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa de Jesús de Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, Delosomontalia, Demoporo Sumontalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Muhammad Khalid, Duabit Durano, Di Elago, Inverga, Erise, Eregel, Ermita, Boyns, Scuderos, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Evardone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gastaia, Gachilan, Heron, Goana Cristina, Gomar, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusso, Sabir, Kokunhon, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Lechon, Lilim, Kaychong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Liola, Makapagalaroy, Maseda Madrona, Malapita, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadato, Soharto, Magudadato, Sajid, Marcoletta, Marcos, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navani, Eto, Noel, Nogralis, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Ominalo, Campo, Libares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pakia Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias, Agabas, Kimboradasa, Ramiro, Sato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilla, Roapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez, Isidro, Rodriguez Maxmo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagabaria, Sahalis, Alceda, Salimbagun, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Rekt, Sarmiento, Cesar, Sarmiento, Edgar Meri, Sabiliano, Semasiao, Silveira, Sinson, Juan Sin Estridita, Juan Sin Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shernitiada, Tevez, Chanco, Ting, Tinio, Tulintino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umalie, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas, Alfonso, Vilarde, Velasco, Velasco, Catera, Viloso, Vergara, Villafuerza, Villanueva, Villas, Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milasio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri. Kagas, Calderon, Calixto, Robiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katamco, Kaitano, Celeste, Sirafika, Siriles, Chavez, Chepeko, Kuwanko, Kulyantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cusalan, Crisolo, Kuakua, Quresma, Cueva, Dalipet, Datol, Dasa, de Jesus, De Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, De Rosario, De Losa, Sumontalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Muhammad Khalid, Duabit Durano, Di Elago, Inverga, Erise, Eregel, Ermita, Boyns, Scuderos, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Evardone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gastaia, Gachilan, Heron, Goana Cristina, Gomar, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez, Gonzalez Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusso, Sabir, Kokunhon, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Lechon, Lilim, Kaychong, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Maseda Madrona, Malapita, Manalo.
... Mayor Christian Tilap Levy, Isalina, Mel Babaton, Jennifer, Abilin, and Jonas Amba.
To the guests of Honorable Acosta Alba, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9141. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of said measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 9141, an act requiring a basic first aid training for personnel of tourism enterprises, tourism-oriented non-government organizations, and people's organizations and individual providers of tourism-related services. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Number 9141. Abaya, Abayo, Nabaliano, Saabu, Abueg, Chirona, Akapakosta, Akosalba, Adyong, Advincola, Agaraw, Agabaw, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matongandaya, Angaracastillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magcaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Tienza, Amentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bersaga, Batawin, Bautista, Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte, Feliciano, Belmonte, Ose Christopher, Belmonte, Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Piason, Bilyones, Bilyon, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut, Megtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixto, Robiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katamco, Kaitano, Sirafika, Siriles, Chavez, Chepeko, Kuwanko, Kulyantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cusalan, Crisolo, Kuakua, Quresma, Cueva, Dalipet, Datol, Dasa, de Jesus, De Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, De Rosario, De Losa, Sumontalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Muhammad Khalid, Duabit Durano, Di Elago, Inverga, Erise, Eregel, Ermita, Boyns, Scuderos, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Evardone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gastaia, Gachilan, Heron, Goana Cristina, Gomar, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernandez Ferdinand, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusso, Sabir, Kokunhon, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lechon, Lilim, Kaychong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Liola, Makapagalaroy, Maseda Madrona, Malapita, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadato, Sajid, Marcoletta, Marcos, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navani, Eto, Noel, Nogralis, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Ominalo, Campo, Libares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pakia Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias, Agabas, Kimboradasa, Ramiro, Sato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilla, Roapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez, Isidro, Rodriguez Maxmo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagabaria, Sahalis, Alceda, Salimbagun, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Rekt, Sarmiento, Cesar, Sarmiento, Edgar Meri, Sabiliano, Semasiao, Silveira, Sinson, Juan Sin Estridita, Juan Sin Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shernitiada, Tevez, Chanco, Ting, Tinio, Tulintino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umalie, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas, Alfonso, Vilarde, Velasco, Velasco, Catera, Viloso, Vergara, Villafuerza, Villanueva, Villaraz, Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milasio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy seven members voting and affirmative zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill Number 9155 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9156. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of said measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 9156, an act providing comprehensive renal replacement therapy for patients with end-stage renal disease in national, regional, and provincial government hospitals, increasing the pill health package rate for renal replacement therapy of members and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Number 9156. Abaya, Abayo, Nabaliano, Saabu, Abueg, Chirona, Akapakosta, Akosalba, Adyong, Advincola, Agaraw, Agabaw, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matongandaya, Angaracastillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magcaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Tienza, Amentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bersaga, Batawin, Bautista, Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte, Feliciano, Belmonte, Ose Christopher, Belmonte, Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Piason, Bilyones, Bilyon, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut, Megtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixto, Robiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katamco, Kaitano, Celeste, Sirafika, Siriles, Chavez, Chepeko, Kuwanko, Kulyantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cusalan, Crisolo, Kuakua, Quresma, Cueva, Dalipet, Datol, Dasa, de Jesus, De Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, De Rosario, De Losa, Sumontalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Muhammad Khalid, Duabit Durano, Di Elago, Inverga, Erise, Eregel, Ermita, Boyns, Scuderos, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Evardone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gastaia, Gachilan, Heron, Goana Cristina, Gomar, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusso, Sabir, Kokunhon, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lechon, Lilim, Kaychong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Liola, Makapagalaroy, Maseda Madrona, Malapita, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadato, Soharto, Magudadato, Sajid, Marcoletta, Marcos, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navani, Eto, Noel, Nogralis, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Ominalo, Campo, Libares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pakia Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias, Agabas, Kimboradasa, Ramiro, Sato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilla, Roapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez, Isidro, Rodriguez Maxmo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagabaria, Sahalis, Alceda, Salimbagun, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Rekt, Sarmiento, Cesar, Sarmiento, Edgar Meri, Sabiliano, Semasiao, Silveira, Sinson, Juan Sin Estridita, Juan Sin Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shernitiada, Tevez, Chanco, Ting, Tinio, Tulintino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umalie, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas, Alfonso, Vilarde, Velasco, Velasco, Catera, Viloso, Vergara, Villafuerza, Villanueva, Villaraz, Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milasio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy seven members voting and affirmative zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill Number 9156 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9160. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of said measure and call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 9160, an act mandating golf clubs to provide social security and welfare benefits to golf caddies and other related service workers through a shared contribution scheme. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 9160. Abaya, Abayo, Nabaliano, Saabu, Abueg, Chirona, Akapakosta, Akosalba, Adyong, Advincola, Agaraw, Agabaw, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matongandaya, Angaracastillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magcaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Tienza, Amentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bersaga, Batawin, Bautista, Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte, Feliciano, Belmonte, Ose Christopher, Belmonte, Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Piason, Bilyones, Bilyon, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut, Megtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixto, Robiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katamco, Kaitano, Celeste, Sirafika, Siriles, Chavez, Chepeko, Kuwanko, Kulyantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cusalan, Crisolo, Kuakua, Quresma, Cueva, Dalipet, Datol, Dasa, de Jesus, De Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, De Rosario, De Losa, Sumontalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Muhammad Khalid, Duabit Durano, Di Elago, Inverga, Erise, Eregel, Ermita, Boyns, Scuderos, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Evardone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gastaia, Gachilan, Heron, Goana Cristina, Gomar, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusso, Sabir, Kokunhon, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Lechon, Lilim, Kaychong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyal, Makapagalaroy, Maseda Madrona, Malapita, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadato, Soharto, Magudadato, Sajid, Marcoletta, Marcos, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navani, Eto, Noel, Nogralis, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Ominalo, Campo, Libares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pakia Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias, Agabas, Kimboradasa, Ramiro, Sato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilla, Roapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez, Isidro, Rodriguez Maxmo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagabaria, Sahalis, Alceda, Salimbagun, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Rekt, Sarmiento, Cesar, Sarmiento, Edgar Meri, Sabiliano, Semasiao, Silveira, Sinson, Juan Sin Estridita, Juan Sin Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shernitiada, Tevez, Chanco, Ting, Tinio, Tulintino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umalie, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas, Alfonso, Vilarde, Velasco, Velasco, Catera, Viloso, Vergara, Villafuerza, Villanueva, Villaraz, Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milasio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9169. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of said measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 9169, an act rationalizing government intervention in labor disputes by adapting the essential services criteria in the exercise of the assumption or certification power of the Secretary of Labor and Employment and decriminalizing violations thereof, amending for this purpose Presidential Decree Number 442 as amended, otherwise known as the Labor Code of the Philippines. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Number 9169. Abaya, Abayo, Nabaliano, Saabu, Abueg, Chirona, Akapakosta, Akosalba, Adyong, Advincola, Agaraw, Agabaw, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matongandaya, Angaracastillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magcaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Tienza, Amentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bersaga, Batawin, Bautista, Bendigan, Bilaro, Barber, Bersaga, Batawil, Bautista, Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Se Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Anthony, Bravo, Maravida, Brosas, Bulit, Bigtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixto, Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambutting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shorni Tiada, Tevez, Chanco, Ting, Tinyo, Tolintino, Tranya, Stugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ibarreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Cartera, Viloso Vergara, Villa Fuerte, Villa Nueva, Villa Ras Suarez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensha, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora, Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-four members voting in the affirmative, five against, zero abstaining, House Bill number 9169 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill number 9186. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the role for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of said measure and thereafter call the role of members for nominal voting.
House Bill 9186, an act establishing a maternal and infant health home visitation program. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill number 9186. Abaya, Abayon na Bilyano Saabu, Obuega, Chirona, Akop, Akosta, Kosalba, Djong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matongandaya, Angarakastilyon, Tinino Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsens, Aumentado, Bagao, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bersaga, Batawil, Bautista, Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Se Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Anthony, Bravo, Maravida, Brosas, Bulit, Bigtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixto, Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casila, Costelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamko, Kayatan, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Koku, Wanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cusalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa de Jesus, De Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Osario, Del Osomontalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Muhammad Kalid, Duavit Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Irise, Regel, Ermita, Buain, Escuderos, Pina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ibadone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferrer, Juliet, Ferr Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gassetaya, Gachilan, Heron, Goana, Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusso, Sabierno, Kunhood, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Las Atin, Lechon, Lilim, Kaitchong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroy, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadato Suartu, Magundadato Sa Jid, Marcoletta, Marcos, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navanyeto, Noel, Nograles, Lasko, Nunez, Malanyon, Ominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pakia Padwano, Palma, Pancha, Pangani, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda Plaza, Primisias, Agabaskimbo, Radasa, Ramiro, Sator Ramos, Lampago, Sivilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maxmo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Saktalan, Sagabaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmento Cesar, Sarmento Edgar Mary, Saviliano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelitas, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambutting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shorni Tiada, Tevez, Chanco, Ting, Tinyo, Tolintino, Tranya, Stugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Cartera, Viloso Vergara, Villa Fuerte, Villa Nueva, Villa Ras Suarez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensha, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora, Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill number 9186 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration of third reading of House Bill number 9152. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the bill and thereafter to call the role for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of said measure and thereafter call the role of members for nominal voting.
House Bill number 9152, an act declaring certain portions of the welfare built property located in the city of Mandaluyong open for disposition to bona fide residents without public bidding. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill number 9152. Abaya, Abayon na Bilyano Saabu, Obuega, Chirona, Akop, Akosta, Kosalba, Djong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matongandaya, Angarakastilyon, Tinino Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsens, Aumentado, Bagao, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bersaga, Batawil, Bautista, Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Se Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Anthony, Bravo, Maravida, Brosas, Bulit, Bigtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixto, Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casila, Costelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamko, Kayatan, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Koku, Wanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cusalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa de Jesus, De Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Osario, Del Osomontalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Muhammad Kalid, Duavit Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Irise, Regel, Ermita, Buain, Escuderos, Pina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ibadone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferrer, Juliet, Ferr Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gassetaya, Gachilan, Heron, Goana, Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusso, Sabierno, Kunhood, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Las Atin, Lechon, Lilim, Kaitchong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroy, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadato Suartu, Magundadato Sa Jid, Marcoletta, Marcos, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navanyeto, Noel, Nograles, Lasko, Nunez, Malanyon, Ominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pakia Padwano, Palma, Pancha, Pangani, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda Plaza, Primisias, Agabaskimbo, Radasa, Ramiro, Sator Ramos, Lampago, Sivilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maxmo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Saktalan, Sagabaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmento Cesar, Sarmento Edgar Mary, Saviliano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelitas, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambutting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shorni Tiada, Tevez, Chanco, Ting, Tinyo, Tolintino, Tranya, Stugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Cartera, Viloso Vergara, Villa Fuerte, Villa Nueva, Villa Ras Suarez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensha, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora, Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill number 9152 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration of third reading of House Bill 919098. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the role for...
Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gassetaya, Gachilan, Heron, Goana, Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusso, Javier Kokunhood, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Las Atin, Lechon, Lilim, Kaitchong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroy, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadato Suartu, Magundadato Sa Jid, Marcoletta, Marcos, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navanyeto, Noel, Nograles, Lasko, Nunez, Malanyon, Ominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pakia Padwano, Palma, Pancha, Pangani, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda Plaza, Primisias, Agabaskimbo, Radasa, Ramiro, Sator Ramos, Lampago, Sivilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maxmo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Saktalan, Sagabaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmento Cesar, Sarmento Edgar Mary, Saviliano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelitas, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambutting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shorni Tiada, Tevez, Chanco, Ting, Tinyo, Tolintino, Tranya, Stugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ibarreta, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Cartera, Viloso Vergara, Villa Fuerte, Villa Nueva, Villa Ras Suarez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensha, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora, Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill number 9098 is hereby approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration of third reading of House Bill 9101. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the role for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of said measure and thereafter call the role of members for nominal voting.
House Bill number 9101, an act increasing the bed capacity of Sisto Somiyasis Hospital in Palo Leite from twenty-five beds to one hundred beds, upgrading its service facilities and professional healthcare, authorizing the increase of its medical personnel complement and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill number 9101. Abaya, Abayon na Bilyano Saabu, Obuega, Chirona, Akop, Akosta, Kosalba, Djong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matongandaya, Angarakastilyon, Tinino Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsens, Aumentado, Bagao, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bersaga, Batawil, Bautista, Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Se Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Anthony, Bravo, Maravida, Brosas, Bulit, Bigtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixto, Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casila, Costelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamko, Kayatan, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Koku, Wanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cusalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa de Jesus, De Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Osar, Del Osomontalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Muhammad Kalid, Duavit Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Irise, Regel, Ermita, Buain, Escuderos, Pina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ibadone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferr Juliet, Ferr Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gassetaya, Gachilan, Heron, Goana, Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusso, Sabierno, Kunhood, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Las Atin, Lechon, Lilim, Kaitchong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroy, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadato Suartu, Magundadato Sa Jid, Marcoletta, Marcos, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navanyeto, Noel, Nograles, Lasko, Nunez, Malanyon, Ominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vinny, Pakia Padwano, Palma, Pancha, Pangani, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda Plaza, Primisias, Agabaskimbo, Radasa, Ramiro, Sator Ramos, Lampago, Sivilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maxmo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Saktalan, Sagabaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmento Cesar, Sarmento Edgar Mary, Saviliano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelitas, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambutting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shorni Tiada, Tevez, Chanco, Ting, Tinyo, Tolintino, Tranya, Stugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ibarreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Cartera, Viloso Vergara, Villa Fuerte, Villa Nueva, Villa Ras Suarez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensha, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora, Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill number 9101 is hereby approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration of third reading of House Bill 9108. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the role for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of said measure and thereafter call the role of members for nominal voting.
House Bill number 9108, an act providing for the construction of a national road from the junction of Lanau del Norte Interior Circumferential Road at Barangay Poblacion through Barangay Limoncret, Municipality of Bagsaysay, to Barangay San Manuel, Municipality of Lala, to Barangays Pansilan and Catipunan, Municipality of Sapad, to Barangays Mahayahay, Bel East, Malinas, Cityu Dau, Butadon, Banzarville, and Tifolo, Municipality of Capatagan, to Barangay Kalube, Municipality of Sultan Naga di Maporo, to Barangay Lantungan, Municipality of Aurora, Province of Lanau del Norte into a national road to be known as Iligan Aurora Bypass Road and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill number 9108. Abaya, Abayon na Bilyano Saabu, Obuega, Chirona, Akop, Akosta, Kosalba, Djong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matongandaya, Angarakastilyon, Tinino Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsens, Aumentado, Bagao, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bersaga, Batawil, Bautista, Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Se Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Anthony, Bravo, Maravida, Brosas, Bulit, Bigtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixto, Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casila, Costelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamko, Kayatan, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Koku, Wanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cusalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa de Jesus, De Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Osar, Del Osomontalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Muhammad Kalid, Duavit Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Irise, Regel, Ermita, Buain, Escuderos, Pina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ibadone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferr Juliet, Ferr Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gassetaya, Gachilan, Heron, Goana, Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusso, Sabierno, Kunhood, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Las Atin, Lechon, Lilim, Kaitchong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroy, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadato Suartu, Magundadato Sa Jid, Marcoletta, Marcos, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navanyeto, Noel, Nograles, Lasko, Nunez, Malanyon, Ominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pakia Padwano, Palma, Pancha, Pangani, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda Plaza, Primisias, Agabaskimbo, Radasa, Ramiro, Sator Ramos, Lampago, Sivilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maxmo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Saktalan, Sagabaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmento Cesar, Sarmento Edgar Mary, Saviliano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelitas, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambutting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shorni Tiada, Tevez, Chanco, Ting, Tinyo, Tolintino, Tranya, Stugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ibarreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Cartera, Viloso Vergara, Villa Fuerte, Villa Nueva, Villa Ras Suarez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensha, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora, Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill number 9108 is hereby approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill 9114. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the role for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of said measure and thereafter call the role of members for nominal voting.
House Bill number 9114, an act establishing a technical education and skills development authority training and assessment center in the Municipality of Tubod, Province of Lanau del Norte to be known as the Tubod Testa Training and Assessment Center and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 9114. Abaya, Abayon na Bilyano Saabu, Obuega, Chirona, Akop, Akosta, Kosalba, Djong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matongandaya, Angarakastilyon, Tinino Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsens, Aumentado, Bagao, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bersaga, Batawil, Bautista, Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Se Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Anthony, Bravo, Maravida, Brosas, Bulit, Bigtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixto, Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casila, Costelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamko, Kayatan, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Koku, Wanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cusalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa de Jesus, De Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Osar, Del Osomontalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Muhammad Kalid, Duavit Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Irise, Regel, Ermita, Buain, Escuderos, Pina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ibadone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferr Juliet, Ferr Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gassetaya, Gachilan, Heron, Goana, Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusso, Sabierno, Kunhood, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Las Atin, Lechon, Lilim, Kaitchong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroy, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadato Suartu, Magundadato Sa Jid, Marcoletta, Marcos, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navanyeto, Noel, Nograles, Lasko, Nunez, Malanyon, Ominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pakia Padwano, Palma, Pancha, Pangani, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda Plaza, Primisias, Agabaskimbo, Radasa, Ramiro, Sator Ramos, Lampago, Sivilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maxmo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Saktalan, Sagabaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmento Cesar, Sarmento Edgar Mary, Saviliano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelitas, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambutting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shorni Tiada, Tevez, Chanco, Ting, Tinyo, Tolintino, Tranya, Stugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Cartera, Viloso Vergara, Villa Fuerte, Villa Nueva, Villa Ras Suarez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensha, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora, Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill number 9114 is hereby approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill 9109. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the role for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of said measure and thereafter call the role of members for nominal voting.
House Bill number 9109, an act providing for the construction of a national highway from the Lanau del Norte Interior Circumferential Road in the Municipality of Tagoloan, Province of Lanau del Norte, to the Municipality of Talacag, Province of Bukidnon, with a crossroad at Barangay Malimbato, Municipality of Tagoloan, Province of Lanau del Norte, and connecting roads to the National Highway in Iligan City through Barangay Pugaan, Iligan City, and to the National Highway in Marawi City through the Municipality of Kapai, Province of Lanau del Sur, to be known as the Muslim Christian Unity Crossroad Highways and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill number 9109. Abaya, Abayon na Bilyano Saabu, Obuega, Chirona, Akop, Akosta, Kosalba, Djong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matongandaya, Angarakastilyon, Tinino Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsens, Aumentado, Bagao, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bersaga, Batawil, Bautista, Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Se Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Anthony, Bravo, Maravida, Brosas, Bulit, Bigtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixto, Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casila, Costelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamko, Kayatan, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Koku, Wanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cusalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa de Jesus, De Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Osar, Del Osomontalia, Demoporo Muhammad Abdullah, Demoporo Muhammad Kalid, Duavit Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Irise, Regel, Ermita, Buain, Escuderos, Pina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ibadone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferr Juliet, Ferr Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gassetaya, Gachilan, Heron, Goana, Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusso, Javier Kokunhood, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Las Atin, Lechon, Lilim, Kaitchong, Lobrigat, Laxón, Lagman, Lenete, Laugán, Lasatin, Lechón, Lilim, Caichón, Lobrigat, López Benjor, López Carlos, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroya, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadato Suarto, Magundadato Sajid, Marco Leta, Marcos Mariño, Marques Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navanieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez, Malanyao, Ominaro, Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Paco Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Paganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia, Sagabas, Kimbor, Radasa, Ramiro, Sato, Ramos, Lampagos, Revilla, Roapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez, Sidro, Rodríguez, Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Rojas, Akdalan, Sagarbaría, Sahales, Alceda, Salimbango, Salón, San Bar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento, César, Sarmiento, Edgar Meri, Sabillano, Semas Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Swansing, Estrillitas, Swansing, Horacio, Suárez, Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Tingtingyo, Talentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Baretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilarde Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso Vergara, Villapuerde, Villanueva, Villeras, Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencia, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora, María Carmen, Zamora, Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill Number 9109 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for consideration on third reading of House Bill 9120. For this purpose, my request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of said measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 9110, an act increasing the bed capacity of the Beacol Medical Center from five hundred beds to one thousand beds, upgrading its service facilities, professional health care services, authorizing the increase of its medical workforce complement, amending for the purpose Republic Act Number 9053, and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 9110.
Abaya, Abayo, Nabillano, Sabo, Abuega, Chirona, Acopacosta, Acosta, Alba, Jong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alcala, Aleano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matong, Andaya, Ang, Angara, Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino, Magseisai, Aragonés, Harbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Amentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Versaga, Batawil, Bautista, Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte, Feliciano, Belmonte, Jose Christopher, Belmonte, Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo, Anthony, Bravo, María Vida, Brosas, Bulut, Begtang, Cagas, Calderón, Calixto, Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Carri, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Catamco, Caietano, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chávez, Chapeco, Coahuancó, Culiantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisólogo, Cuacuarezma, Cueva, Dalípe, Datol, Dasa de Jesús, De Venesia, Defensor del Mar, Del Rosario, De Losa Montalia, Demapuro Abdullah, Demapuro Mohamed Kali, Duabit, Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erisé, Erigel, Armita Buah, Escudero Espina Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ibadon, Epariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florento, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garsas, García Guendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gassetaya, Gachalian, Herón, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gómez Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Gruseta, Gulyas Hernández Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera D., Hofer, Jallosos, Javier Cocon, Hunlabad, Labad, Laxón, Lagman, Lenete, Laugán, Lasatin, Lechón, Lilim, Caichón, Lobrigat, López Benjor, López Carlos, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroya, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadato Suarto, Magundadato Sajid, Marco Leta, Marcos Mariño, Marques Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navanieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez, Malanyao, Ominaro, Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Paco Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Paganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia, Sagabas, Kimbor, Radasa, Ramiro, Sato, Ramos, Lampagos, Revilla, Roapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez, Sidro, Rodríguez, Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Rojas, Akdalan, Sagarbaría, Sahales, Alceda, Salimbango, Salón, San Bar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento, César, Sarmiento, Edgar Meri, Sabillano, Semas Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Swansing, Estrillitas, Swansing, Horacio, Suárez, Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Tingtingyo, Talentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Baretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilarde Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso Vergara, Villapuerde, Villanueva, Villeras, Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencia, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora, María Carmen, Zamora, Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill Number 9110 is hereby approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for consideration on third reading of House Bill 9127. For this purpose, my request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of said measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 9117, an act appropriating funds for the construction of additional classrooms, laboratories, and dormitories in the University of Science and Technology of Southern Philippines, Claveria Campus. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Number 9117.
Abaya, Abayo, Nabillano, Sabo, Abuega, Chirona, Acopacosta, Acosta, Alba, Jong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alcala, Aleano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matong, Andaya, Ang, Angara, Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino, Magseisai, Aragonés, Harbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Amentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Versaga, Batawil, Bautista, Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte, Feliciano, Belmonte, Jose Christopher, Belmonte, Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo, Anthony, Bravo, María Vida, Brosas, Bulut, Begtang, Cagas, Calderón, Calixto, Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Carri, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Catamco, Caietano, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chávez, Chapeco, Coahuancó, Culiantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisólogo, Cuacuarezma, Cueva, Dalípe, Datol, Dasa de Jesús, De Venesia, Defensor del Mar, Del Rosario, De Losa Montalia, Demapuro Abdullah, Demapuro Mohamed Kali, Duabit, Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erisé, Erigel, Armita Buah, Escudero Espina Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ibadon, Epariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florento, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garsas, García Guendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gassetaya, Gachalian, Herón, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gómez Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Gruseta, Gulyas Hernández Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera D., Hofer, Jallosos, Javier Cocon, Hunlabad, Labad, Laxón, Lagman, Lenete, Laugán, Lasatin, Lechón, Lilim, Caichón, Lobrigat, López Benjor, López Carlos, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroya, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadato Suarto, Magundadato Sajid, Marco Leta, Marcos Mariño, Marques Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navanieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez, Malanyao, Ominaro, Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Paco Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Paganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia, Sagabas, Kimbor, Radasa, Ramiro, Sato, Ramos, Lampagos, Revilla, Roapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez, Sidro, Rodríguez, Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Rojas, Akdalan, Sagarbaría, Sahales, Alceda, Salimbango, Salón, San Bar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento, César, Sarmiento, Edgar Meri, Sabillano, Semas Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Swansing, Estrillitas, Swansing, Horacio, Suárez, Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Tingtingyo, Talentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Baretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilarde Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso Vergara, Villapuerde, Villanueva, Villeras, Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencia, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora, María Carmen, Zamora, Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill Number 9117 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for consideration on third reading of House Bill 9127. For this purpose, my request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 9127, an act establishing a registration of the Bureau of Broadcast Services in Maasin City, province of Southern Leyte, and providing funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 9127.
Abaya, Abayo, Nabillano, Sabo, Abuega, Chirona, Acopacosta, Acosta, Alba, Jong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alcala, Aleano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matong, Andaya, Ang, Angara, Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino, Magseisai, Aragonés, Harbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Amentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Versaga, Batawil, Bautista, Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte, Feliciano, Belmonte, Jose Christopher, Belmonte, Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo, Anthony, Bravo, María Vida, Brosas, Bulut, Begtang, Cagas, Calderón, Calixto, Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Carri, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Catamco, Caietano, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chávez, Chapeco, Coahuancó, Culiantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisólogo, Cuacuarezma, Cueva, Dalípe, Datol, Dasa de Jesús, De Venesia, Defensor del Mar, Del Rosario, De Losa Montalia, Demapuro Abdullah, Demapuro Mohamed Kali, Duabit, Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erisé, Erigel, Armita Buah, Escudero Espina Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ibadon, Epariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florento, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garsas, García Guendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gassetaya, Gachalian, Herón, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gómez Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Gruseta, Gulyas Hernández Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera D., Hofer, Jallosos, Javier Cocon, Hunlabad, Labad, Laxón, Lagman, Lenete, Laugán, Lasatin, Lechón, Lilim, Caichón, Lobrigat, López Benjor, López Carlos, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroya, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadato Suarto, Magundadato Sajid, Marco Leta, Marcos Mariño, Marques Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navanieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez, Malanyao, Ominaro, Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Paco Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Paganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia, Sagabas, Kimbor, Radasa, Ramiro, Sato, Ramos, Lampagos, Revilla, Roapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez, Sidro, Rodríguez, Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Rojas, Akdalan, Sagarbaría, Sahales, Alceda, Salimbango, Salón, San Bar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento, César, Sarmiento, Edgar Meri, Sabillano, Semas Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Swansing, Estrillitas, Swansing, Horacio, Suárez, Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Tingtingyo, Talentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Baretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilarde Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso Vergara, Villapuerde, Villanueva, Villeras, Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencia, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora, María Carmen, Zamora, Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill Number 9127 is hereby approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for consideration on third reading of House Bill 9129. For this purpose, my request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 9129, an act declaring the elusión datum located in Barangay Hinangayon, Mugpog, province of Marinduke, a tourist spot and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Number 9129.
Abaya, Abayo, Nabillano, Sabo, Abuega, Chirona, Acopacosta, Acosta, Alba, Jong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alcala, Aleano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matong, Andaya, Ang, Angara, Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino, Magseisai, Aragonés, Harbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Amentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Versaga, Batawil, Bautista, Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte, Feliciano, Belmonte, Jose Christopher, Belmonte, Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo, Anthony, Bravo, María Vida, Brosas, Bulut, Begtang, Cagas, Calderón, Calixto, Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Carri, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Catamco, Caietano, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chávez, Chapeco, Coahuancó, Culiantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisólogo, Cuacuarezma, Cueva, Dalípe, Datol, Dasa de Jesús, De Venesia, Defensor del Mar, Del Rosario, De Losa Montalia, Demapuro Abdullah, Demapuro Mohamed Kali, Duabit, Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erisé, Erigel, Armita Buah, Escudero Espina Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ibadon, Epariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florento, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garsas, García Guendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gassetaya, Gachalian, Herón, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gómez Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Gruseta, Gulyas Hernández Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera D., Hofer, Jallosos, Javier Cocon, Hunlabad, Labad, Laxón, Lagman, Lenete, Laugán, Lasatin, Lechón, Lilim, Caichón, Lobrigat, López Benjor, López Carlos, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroya, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadato Suarto, Magundadato Sajid, Marco Leta, Marcos Mariño, Marques Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navanieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez, Malanyao, Ominaro, Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Paco Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Paganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia, Sagabas, Kimbor, Radasa, Ramiro, Sato, Ramos, Lampagos, Revilla, Roapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez, Sidro, Rodríguez, Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Rojas, Akdalan, Sagarbaría, Sahales, Alceda, Salimbango, Salón, San Bar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento, César, Sarmiento, Edgar Meri, Sabillano, Semas Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Swansing, Estrillitas, Swansing, Horacio, Suárez, Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Tingtingyo, Talentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Baretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilarde Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso Vergara, Villapuerde, Villanueva, Villeras, Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencia, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora, María Carmen, Zamora, Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill Number 9129 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for consideration on third reading of House Bill 9133. For this purpose, my request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of said measure and thereafter call the members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 9133, an act declaring Trujillo's White Beach located in the municipality of Trujillo's province of Marinduke, an ecotourism site and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 9133.
Abaya, Abayo, Nabillano, Sabo, Abuega, Chirona, Acopacosta, Acosta, Alba, Jong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alcala, Aleano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matong, Andaya, Ang, Angara, Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino, Magseisai, Aragonés, Harbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Amentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Versaga, Batawil, Bautista, Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte, Feliciano, Belmonte, Jose Christopher, Belmonte, Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo, Anthony, Bravo, María Vida, Brosas, Bulut, Begtang, Cagas, Calderón, Calixto, Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Carri, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Catamco, Caietano, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chávez, Chapeco, Coahuancó, Culiantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisólogo, Cuacuarezma, Cueva, Dalípe, Datol, Dasa de Jesús, De Venesia, Defensor del Mar, Del Rosario, De Losa Montalia, Demapuro Abdullah, Demapuro Mohamed Kali, Duabit, Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erisé, Erigel, Armita Buah, Escudero Espina Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ibadon, Epariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florento, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garsas, García Guendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gassetaya, Gachalian, Herón, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gómez Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Gruseta, Gulyas Hernández Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera D., Hofer, Javier, Javier Jallosos, Cocon, Hunlabad, Labad, Laxón, Lagman, Lenete, Laugán, Lasatin, Lechón, Lilim, Caichón, Lobrigat, López Benjor, López Carlos, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroya, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadato Suarto, Magundadato Sajid, Marco Leta, Marcos Mariño, Marques Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navanieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez, Malanyao, Ominaro, Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Paco Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Paganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia, Sagabas, Kimbor, Radasa, Ramiro, Sato, Ramos, Lampagos, Revilla, Roapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez, Sidro, Rodríguez, Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Rojas, Akdalan, Sagarbaría, Sahales, Alceda, Salimbango, Salón, San Bar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento, César, Sarmiento, Edgar Meri, Sabillano, Semas Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Swansing, Estrillitas, Swansing, Horacio, Suárez, Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Tingtingyo, Talentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Baretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilarde Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso Vergara, Villapuerde, Villanueva, Villeras, Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencia, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora, María Carmen, Zamora, Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill Number 9133 is hereby approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for consideration on third reading of House Bill 9136. For this purpose, my request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill number nine one three six, an act declaring the Burnham Park located in the city of Baguio, a national heritage park and appropriating funds for its conservation and development. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill number nine one three six. Abaya Abayon, Abellionosa, Abu, Abuega, Cheron, Akop, Akosta, Akosalba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Albano, Alkala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatongandaya, Angangara, Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino, Magcaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atensa, Umentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Versaga, Batawit, Bautista, Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Mariavida, Brosas, Bulutpect, Angkagas, Calderon, Calixtorubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilo Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katamco, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Cohuancco, Culliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosolan, Crisologo, Kuak, Quaresma, Cueva, Dalipet, Datol, Dasa de Jesús, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalia, Dimapur Abdullah, Dimapur Mohamed Kalid, Duavit Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Regel, Ermita, Buahin, Scudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Bardone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuna, Fentebella, Garbin, Garcías, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Charon, Gasta Taya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Goma Gomez, Gonzaga, Alexandria, Gonzales Aurelio, Gonzales Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera, D. Hofer, Alasos, Javier, Kokunhon, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lietchon, Lilim, Kaychong, Lobrigat, López Benhor, López Carlos, López Manuel, Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroy, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadatos, Harto, Magudadatos, Sajid, Marcoletta, Marcos Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Villana, Mending, Mendoza, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava Nieto, Noel, Nogriles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Nominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pakia, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Paganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premise, Agabas, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Revilia, Ropuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo Roques, Akdalan, Sagarbarea, Sahales, Alceda, Salimbango, Salo, Sanbar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Meri, Sabianos, Sebas Xiao, Silberio, Sosin Estrillita, Sosin Horacio, Suárez, Alvarado, Tambuting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Tebes, Chanco, Tingting, Tolintino, Trainas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ujuli, Oi Rolando, Oi Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso Vergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villeras Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencia, Yap Victor. You Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill number nine one three six is hereby approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we recognize the guest of the Honorable Deputy Speaker Lina Bel Ruth Villarica, the person of Consul General Mohammed Wasim Na, wife of Shakoda Mate, Aleppo from Aleppo, Syria, Consul General Isam El Devs of Syria, Grace Kojingan, Vice President of Victoria Manufacturing, Ambassador Ricardo Endaya of DFA, Omar Pangrunan of DFA Legal Officer, Mr. and Mrs. Luigi Lolli Bernas.
To the guest of Deputy Speaker Villarica, welcome to the House of Representatives, sir and ma'am. Thank you for your visit. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for consideration a third reading of House Bill nine one six three. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of said measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill nine one six three, an act establishing a technical education and skills development authority, training and assessment center in Quezon City, to be known as the Quezon City Testa Training and Assessment Center and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill nine one six three. Abaya Abayon, Abellionosa, Abu, Abuega, Cheron, Akop, Akosta, Akosalba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Albano, Alkala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatongandaya, Angangara, Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino, Magcaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atensa, Umentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Versaga, Batawit, Bautista, Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Mariavida, Brosas, Bulutpect, Angkagas, Calderon, Calixtorubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilo Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katamco, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Cohuancco, Culliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosolan, Crisologo, Kuak, Quaresma, Cueva, Dalipet, Datol, Dasa de Jesús, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalia, Dimapur Abdullah, Dimapur Mohamed Kalid, Duavit Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Regel, Ermita, Buahin, Scudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Bardone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuna, Fentebella, Garbin, Garcías, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Charon, Gasta Taya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Goma Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzales Alexandria, Gonzales Aurelio, Gonzales Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera, D. Hofer, Halusos, Xavier, Kokunhon, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lietchon, Lilim, Kaychong, Lobrigat, López Benhor, López Carlos, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroy, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadatos, Harto, Magudadatos, Sajid, Marcoletta, Marcos Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Villana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava Nieto, Noel, Nogriles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Nominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pakia, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Paganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premise, Agabas, Kimbor, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Revilia, Ropuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo Roques, Akdalan, Sagarbarea, Sahales, Alceda, Salimbango, Salo, Sanbar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Meri, Sabianos, Sebas Xiao, Silverio, Sosin Estrillita, Sosin Horacio, Suárez, Alvarado, Tambuting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Tebes, Chanco, Tingting, Tolintino, Trainas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ujuli, Oi Rolando, Oi Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso Vergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villeras Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencia, Yap Victor. You Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill number nine one six three is hereby approved on third reading. Majority Leader. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for consideration a third reading of House Bill nine one seven five. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of said measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill number nine one seven five, an act establishing the Occidental Mendoro Sports Academy and Training Center in the municipality of San Jose, province of Occidental Mendoro and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill number nine one seven five. Abaya Abayon, Abellionosa, Abu, Abuega, Cheron, Akop, Akosta, Akosalba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Albano, Alkala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatongandaya, Angangara, Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino, Magcaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atensa, Umentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Versaga, Batawit, Bautista, Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Mariavida, Brosas, Bulutpect, Angkagas, Calderon, Calixtorubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilo Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katamco, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Cohuancco, Culliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosolan, Crisologo, Kuak, Quaresma, Cueva, Dalipet, Datol, Dasa de Jesús, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalia, Dimapur Abdullah, Dimapur Mohamed Kalid, Duavit Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Regel, Ermita, Buahin, Scudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Bardone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuna, Fentebella, Garbin, Garcías, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Charon, Gasta Taya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Goma Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzales Alexandria, Gonzales Aurelio, Gonzales Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera, D. Hofer, Halusos, Xavier, Kokunhon, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lietchon, Lilim, Kaychong, Lobrigat, López Benhor, López Carlos, López Manuel, Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroy, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadatos, Harto, Magudadatos, Sajid, Marcoletta, Marcos Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Villana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava Nieto, Noel, Nogriles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Nominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pakia, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Paganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premise, Agabas, Kimbor, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Revilia, Ropuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo Roques, Akdalan, Sagarbarea, Sahales, Alceda, Salimbango, Salo, Sanbar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Meri, Sabianos, Sebas Xiao, Silberio, Sosin Estrillita, Sosin Horacio, Suárez, Alvarado, Tambuting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Tebes, Chanco, Tingting, Tolintino, Trainas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ujuli, Oi Rolando, Oi Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso Vergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villeras Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencia, Yap Victor. You Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill number nine one seven five is hereby approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for consideration a third reading of House Bill nine one eight seven. For this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of said measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill number nine one eight seven, an act renaming the Talisay District Hospital in Talisay City, province of Cebu into Cebu South Medical Center and appropriating funds therefore. Amending for the purpose Republic Act number seven seven nine nine entitled an act establishing a district hospital in the municipality of Talisay, province of Cebu, to be known as the Talisay District Hospital and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill number nine one eight seven. Abaya Abayon, Abellionosa, Abu, Abuega, Cheron, Akop, Akosta, Akosalba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Albano, Alkala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatongandaya, Angangara, Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino, Magcaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atensa, Umentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Versaga, Batawit, Bautista, Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Mariavida, Brosas, Bulutpect, Angkagas, Calderon, Calixtorubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilo Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katamco, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Cohuancco, Culliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosolan, Crisologo, Kuak, Quaresma, Cueva, Dalipet, Datol, Dasa de Jesús, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalia, Dimapur Abdullah, Dimapur Mohamed Kalid, Duavit Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Regel, Ermita, Buahin, Scudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Bardone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuna, Fentebella, Garbin, Garcías, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Charon, Gasta Taya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Goma Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzales Alexandria, Gonzales Aurelio, Gonzales Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera, D. Hofer, Halusos, Xavier, Kokunhon, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lietchon, Lilim, Kaychong, Lobrigat, López Benhor, López Carlos, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroy, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadatos, Harto, Magudadatos, Sajid, Marcoletta, Marcos Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Villana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava Nieto, Noel, Nogriles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Nominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pakia, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Paganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premise, Agabas, Kimbor, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Revilia, Ropuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo Roques, Akdalan, Sagarbarea, Sahales, Alceda, Salimbango, Salo, Sanbar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Meri, Sabianos, Sebas Xiao, Silverio, Sosin Estrillita, Sosin Horacio, Suárez, Alvarado, Tambuting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Tebes, Chanco, Tingting, Tolintino, Trainas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ujuli, Oi Rolando, Oi Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villeras Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencia, Yap Victor. You Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill number nine one eight seven is hereby approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up business for the day.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up House Resolution under Committee Report Number six zero zero and may we direct the Secretary General to read the title of the resolution.
There is a motion for the consideration of House Resolution one six seven three. Is there any objection? Hearing none. The Secretary General is requested to read the title of the same.
House Resolution one six seven three, resolution commending the Lamac Multipurpose Cooperative for its outstanding achievements and leadership in the upliftment and development of the cooperatives in the country.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt Resolution, House Resolution one six seven three.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The House Resolution is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the approval of Journal. Bills approved on third reading to the Senate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend session. To suspend.
Session is suspended. Session is suspended. Session is suspended. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we designate the following members to the Pycameral Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions on House Bill Number 6908 and Senate Bill 1826, restrengthening the security of tenure of workers in private sector. The representatives, sorry, Representative Luisa Loren Quaresma, Representative Prosper Pichai Junior, Representative Randolph Ting, Representative Raymond Democrito Mendoza, Representative Marco, Representative Aniseto Bertis III, Representative Arlin Brosas, Representative Tom Villarin.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend session till tomorrow at 3 o'clock, May 28, 2019.
Session is suspended until 3 PM tomorrow, May 28, 2019.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.